To these two people, they intended to this fall start building a retirement home up there. Now it's getting so far in the year and we're at this point that, but in the spring, they do want to build their retirement home up there. They say it's going to be on the larger lot, the bottom lot, and every time they go up there and look at things from the top, then they wait. They don't know which one they're going to do. Isn't that right?
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to address the procedures after we get all of the applicant's presentation and then so that we can pick some paths to go.
Do you want to read this now or is it because of the legislation?
I'm going to finish it in this presentation.
Okay. Did you want me to read that thing?
No, no, no. They want time to read it.
Yeah.
Well, then on the road variance, there again, the real reason we're requesting a variance is number one, the way your regulation reads, it's shocking, takes your breath away to read that if you want to do a little one lot split up there, make them two lots out of one lot, you need to rebuild four miles of road. And, you know, that makes an impossibility for the heaths or any one of your other owners up there. You can't do that. It doesn't work economically. You can't just, you can just go somewhere else. So that's the main reason. And they bought this ground under the premise, full faith and premise, that they could split that lot one time. This plat went to record in 2001 or 2000, I think it went from 2000 actually. And it went through review noting that certain lots could be split one time, certain lots could have no splits. There could only ever be a one-time split in any one of these 32 or 35 lots, whichever it was. And it was approved that way and went of record. And it was sold that way to the people that bought up there. And I can't say for sure what everybody else had in mind when they bought it, but I'm sure when it was priced, there was an added value to the sale price of those lots because you can split it one time. So you got some way to get a return on your investment here. It's a little cabbie or carrot there for you. And I know the heath, from what I've been told, they bought that with that in mind. They were going to build a retirement home. Part of the ability to do that is to be able to split off part of that thing, sell it, recover part of their initial investment. So I think if this variance is denied, I think they've been guilty of injustice, and that would be a personal hardship to them. And I know you don't like to hear about money being a hardship, but in reality it is. It's a real hardship. As far as the road, it doesn't meet your 24-foot standard that you have today. It doesn't meet your 8% grade standard in many places that you have today. And one thing I'd like to do to, right now, you, a lot of people look at whatever the road standard is to a particular county. When you look at Granite Counties, you got new road standard, it's 8% maximum grade. I want to dispel any idea you may have that that means anything above 8% is not a safe grade. It's just a standard you have to meet here that was picked by somebody and put on a sheet of paper and went through some reviews and ended up as a standard. Every county has that. Some got eight, some got more, some got less. I've got another little handout. Ravalli County is a county that I do a lot of work with. They just adopted a new standard this June. And their road standard, although that's Ravalli County, this is Granite, let me just show you that 8% isn't a magic number. They have a 10% grade, and if you can get fire chiefs to sign off on it, they don't At least it's just to show you.
Thank you.
8%, I don't want anybody to get stuck on that 8%. And then speaking of grades, we'll do one more handout. It's so often people go and talk about Ashdod. This is Ashdod's book on geometric design of roads, urban roads, city roads, rural roads, the whole model acts is in here, which talks about everything from soup to nuts. One of them is, is grades, vertical grade. So here is another little thing. And Ashdod does not hand out, or does not set specifications, it sets by. So if you look at that chart on this sheet, she, a mountainous terrain, which I believe this is, and at 30 miles an hour, I think it says a 14% grade is the standard guideline. So when you talk to the road in Arrowstone, you can't change its location. It's bound by a right-of-way that's bound by lot boundaries, or in the case of 48, it goes through the middle of the lot there, which also would be against your regulations, I believe. But it's fit on the side of the mountain the way it is. And it's got grades, I never, I haven't done a topography survey on that, but it's got grades, I did an infonometer survey on it this afternoon. It's got grades that for the most part do not exceed the 14%. There's a couple of little pitches that are really short that go about 15. Where the accident was, that's about 11 and a half percent grade up there. So I'm just telling you this because I don't want you to get hung up on a safety standpoint because your grade is set at 8% max.
Gordon, if I can interrupt you. Sure. As I look at it, and you know, and I'm in the construction business, I like to see houses going up, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with the grade, but I look at that road from just past Pollock's there and coming up and it's like, man. I mean, I drove up there, I got a two-ton truck, so it's, and that's not huge, but it's, you know, it's pretty good size, and it's like, I don't know what other than if we'd have met someone on that road. And that's, and it isn't just the heath portion, but it's, you know, that, I don't know how long an area is, that was, that was my concern. I mean, just, I don't know if they run school buses up there or something like that. But I, and I'm, but I'm still listening. And that was kind of.
Can I ask a question?
By chance.
Pitch, if I can do that right?
Yep.
While you're talking pitchboard, Trapper Ridge goes onto 40A for two sections, right here on this piece, and then around this bend. It seems like, it seems like the only place it really has some pictures of elevation changing is as it approaches the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
That was my question. Okay.
I'm sorry, I can hear your answer.
It's about 8, I think that's less than 8%.
Eight percent, okay.
It's about 4% on this whole, they go.
Okay.
And then the worst part is right up in the east of Pollock's. That's the worst part. That's, there's some dirt, barely touches 14% there.
Like you said, I don't, I don't really have a problem with the grade. I mean, if I was driving up, I mean, maybe, maybe in three months from now.
Well, that's a condition again.
Yeah, I understand.
And to me, I as an engineer would not want to put my seal on a new road that I have designed that had narrow turns, 13 feet, something. It's got, I could lay that road out, I shouldn't be right, so. But that road has been made to fit that mountain and not been very far off of where it is. And eliminated those steeper grades. Look a good look at that today when I came down.
May I ask some questions?
Yes.
Mr. Sorenson, I have some questions because I'm looking at the criteria, and this board has to, can't grant this variance unless they can make a determination that, and you're asking to not do any improvements, so they have to say, they have to ask themselves, if we don't require them to do any improvements, is it detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare? And I'm only asking you questions about the portions of Trapper Ridge road that are on your client's property, not off your client's property. Okay? So I, we were up on the site, I guess we didn't tell everybody, and we need to make sure to tell everybody, you were showing us where they were looking at the driveway for 40A2, and you were showing us that it, no, I guess maybe it was on 40, it was where the cul-de-sac came, yeah, it's on 40A1, and you were showing us that the cut for that driveway is actually going to fill in the cul-de-sac, I think it's a turnout. But that you were going to use that fill to expand that turnout, and that would, if someone, if you were granted a variance and one of the conditions was you fill to make that driveway turnout bigger so that there's a big area, would, in your opinion, would that make it safer for public health and safety? It would be detrimental, obviously, so that, that would.
I don't see where it would be detrimental. It could be a wider spot, make it safer for him to make his turnout out of that place.
And if he was turning out, it'd give somebody a.
In the way the right-of-ways are now, that fill would be going on his own property, not even with any metal.
So it would be problematic. I kind of have the same question about the two spots on, again, this is on Trapper Ridge, and I think it's, it's still on 40A1. It was down where the two spots that I believe that John said that he, there were 16 feet wide that you've expressed your concern about, is that, that if they were to grant the variance and require your client to fill those so that they become an 18-foot service, at least back to the original subdivision approval, would that increase? Or I guess, well, it's weird because it always says it's, it cannot be detrimental, which is a negative, so does it, would that improve public health and safety as opposed to being detrimental?
Well, it doesn't have any width, and if you got a short and narrow spot, if you could do that, and that's not going to be a costly thing that would, you know, break the bank.
And your clients clearly didn't do anything to make the road this narrow, correct?
No. But one of my points.
That would be they didn't create the hardship themselves, guys. They're following along on questions.
Oh, it's permitted.
But one of my points about that, not detrimental or cause more risk to the general public than it, goes back to the plating of this subdivision. It was platted and accepted and approved and put to market with the idea, the express idea, the way it was reviewed, that there would be 77 lots or some number like that in the end. So I'm.
And this is where you and I are going to diverge between an engineer and a lawyer. Yes, it was, it was contemplated, but every split has to go through subdivision review, and when you submit for a subdivision review, you have to comply with the rules that are in place at the time you submit. So Will will have to leave that at you, and I will respectfully disagree on your legal conclusion and my legal conclusion about the county's obligations.
I just got a.
Well.
How practical.
It doesn't get, I can tell you your practical conclusion about the fact that it was thought about, doesn't get me any closer to meeting any of these variance criteria.
Hang on.
No. Because your clients didn't do that either, so. And, and one of the criteria was that it has to be unique to the property on which the variance is sought. And I think I, Linda made a proposed finding that it was not unique for this, that the circumstances were not unique for this property because the surrounding properties in Arrowstone were similarly situated, and I, if I were asked, could make a finding that in fact, because the road narrows in a couple of spots on Lot 40, narrower than the 18 feet that was originally approved, I would find that to be a unique circumstance for this property. And to be able to say that that was, and it's not something, obviously, that these owners did, it's just that it narrowed, I could find that to be unique. The fact that this is winding up a mountain, I think, is unique in the way it was cut originally, and they didn't cut it originally, and I agree, it could have been laid out a lot better. I, I think everybody agrees with that. But when you're going through these various criteria for the road, I want you guys to actually contemplate the facts. And so if you have any other facts you want to ask about Mr. Sorenson, please feel free. And then we're going to have to talk about a variance request submitted at your meeting and what that does to decision-making. I'm sorry, and I interrupted you, so if you have more to say, I'll be.
Your fourth variance, you said I didn't meet any?
No, I said, I said I don't think that the fact that it was originally platted and it allowed another split met any of these specifically. I don't find that in any of the categories. That would be me, but I don't make the findings that they do.
We're just here to kind of give guidance to the commissioners, they do their own.
I can speak on behalf of Matt and Karen. If it just took those couple of little narrow areas that you talked about to build those out, I don't think there'd be a problem.
Those would be conditions to a variance that your clients would probably agree to, is what you're saying?
Thank you.
I'd check that.
No, it feels pretty good. I think you can jump the paper. Y'all agree?
I agree. If your can's not full enough, there's a jug of water.
If I came over there, we got issues.
And one more thing. When you talk about rebuilding the road, and I know your standard now is 24-foot wide, great, tell me what would be the need for 24 feet of width up there, except that your standards say.
I can't answer that. Other than, that is the only thing the standards state that.
Well, I, Jim, I have a couple of comments to make on that, yes.
But we're not into comments yet, so ask questions, ask questions. I, at this point.
Okay.
I had, I had a question specifically about all of, okay, so you asked for a variance from the roads. You, you've said in so many words you don't like Condition 38 because it requires you to annex into a fire service district or create your own.
I just don't want to, I don't mind the condition, but I don't want it to hang up the final plaque here.
Right.
You know, like that couldn't be accomplished within a, within a period, it's not long.
Other than that, were there any other conditions that you had any issues with?
I don't think so. They, they come with the conditions that I had with the 2000 road.
Okay. So, yeah, the road and the fire exclusive of that, I, you, the rest of the conditions are okay.
All right. Well, at this time, I think, should we read what he requested for the variance on the road?
Let me tell you the procedural problem that has just occurred, because the public didn't have noticed that they were going to ask for a variance from the fire requirements. And so, and I'm trying, you could move forward on all the other topics and you could conduct a complete hearing and come back and have a little sub-hearing on the fire requirements and the request for the variance. But there's also a fee that goes with filing a variance if they're not, an additional variance, so there would be an additional fee. So this variance isn't even properly before you, and I didn't, I didn't check the timelines on where you are on your timing. So before we spend a lot of time reading it, I mean, we have to figure out what we do with the process for a variance.
Well, there's plenty of time in the process right now because we are on the front end of our process. I think we have till October 10th to get this finished. So we've got, I think, sufficient time. The question is, do you just want, there's nothing that prohibits you, you and your client, from coming back at a later date and requesting an amendment and a variance if you find out that you can't get a contract with the fire service area? So I don't know, I mean, that's just something for you guys to think about. If you'd rather have to go forward with the languages there, maybe a modification that you contract with the fire service area and see what you can do, and you can always come back afterwards.
Or otherwise, if you want us to consider the variance, then unfortunately, these guys have to stop, we have to notice it, renotice it, and let everybody know.
Let's come back if we need it.
Okay.
Because if we, if we can get a contract pretty easy, that's all that's.
According to what you read.
Okay. So, so then essentially you're withdrawing a request for the variance, maybe not the argument for why it shouldn't be opposed, but at least a request for a variance from the buyer, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
Well, when we get to conditions.
Well, I mean, that's not a variance.
Maybe I'll just scroll around for a while.
No, wait, don't miss it. She's hanging herself. I'm enjoying this.
Can we take a public comment, and then maybe they'll testify and you can ask them?
This is what they want in this county, I think they got it.
And if not, then there's a court discussion, you sure can.
Okay. So where would we like to go from here?
This would be public comment.
Go ahead and open it to the public comment. So please state your name and where you live first, and if you have anything that's occurred to the comment, just restate your first name, please, so we have it for the record. And if you agree with someone, you can just state your name and who you are, a lot owner, and if you agree with the statements or if you have other comments. Okay, we're not going to limit it to a time limit, so we have a right to speak your mind.
Can I just take a break, just for one second?
Yes.
I have to stop my recording and start again every seven minutes.
Okay.
Then we can start fresh.
Should we take a five-minute break?
Jody's going to start the show. Jody's going to.
So again, please state your name and where you're from, and if you just have to make another comment later, just state your name again, first name. Thank you. Anyone?
Hello, my name's Hal Seward, and I am the owner of Lot 41, along with my wife Leslie. And I also want you to know that I am a director and officer of the Homeowners Association. So I'm going to speak a little bit on some Homeowners Association stuff, but also on some personal comments. First of all, I was going to correct the fact that there was no telephone surface up there. It only goes to Lot 25 currently. Chances of it going higher are probably slim because it's very expensive. Okay?
We'll note that in the report.
Okay. Also wanted to just give you some information, and thank you for explaining what you mean by upgrades to the road. Okay? That was concerning when all of us in the Homeowners Association read that. We do do the best we can to sprinkle some new gravel, but that's about all we can do as far as upgrade per se, is put some new gravel down. But as you well know, when you plow roads in the wintertime, you lose a lot of that gravel. So in some ways, you're getting a lesser benefit than what you really put down there. But just for your information, we have 43 lots that pay dues. Our maximum dues, according to our covenants, are $250 per lot, per year. Okay? So our maximum revenue in a year is $10,750. Okay? Assuming everybody pays their dues. And we usually have one or two, we have to file a lien against to get it. Okay? Our priorities for the money that we get are, first of all, snow removal in the wintertime. All snow removal is done voluntarily by those of us who live there who have skid steers or things of that nature, and we get reimbursed our fuel costs, and that's it. So it's a volunteer effort to keep the roads drivable in the wintertime. And we really only plow the roads from residences, where they go, you know, if a road from a residence, like from my place, I'm responsible for plowing 1.75 acres down to the next driveway. I mean, 1.75 miles down to the next driveway. Okay? Sometimes I go past that driveway in order to help out the person who's at that driveway. So we do that, we obviously spray for weeds along the right-of-way of the road, we have insurance we have to have because it would be a Homeowners Association. Needless to say, the snow removal varies every year, depending on how bad the winter is, what it costs us to do. We try to take the excess funds that we have and spend them on grading bad spots in the road, trying to make sure that we are getting water off the roadway. You can see that there's a lot of places that's very hard to do and almost impossible. And then, where we can, put down some additional rock. And that's really all we can afford to do. We can't try to make the roads better than they are. I would disagree with the contention that the roads are in the same shape or better than they were when they were built. Okay? And I've owned a lot there since basically March of 2002. We built our house in the summer of 2004. We've lived there full-time throughout the entire year since November of 2009. I also want to point out that, to my knowledge, Trapper Ridge has never been expanded in any way, shape, or form. It is in the width, size, everything that it's always been. Okay? And that's just to my knowledge. I want to point out that, obviously, to get to Lot 40A currently, if you come off the Scalcoho or Highway 38, it's 4.1 miles all the way to the very top cul-de-sac, which goes through my lot to get to the top of that lot. Okay? Along that way, there are 19 lots that are passed on Meadowview, okay, which is the actual road that comes off of Scalcoho, and then turns into Trapper Ridge, where Trapper Ridge starts and goes all the way to the top. I say this because of the fact that I don't think it is appropriate for you guys to rule on a variance for one lot in our subdivision. Okay? Because it's not like that lot is right next to the entrance, and subdividing it and allowing someone else to come into that lot is only going to impact 200 yards or a half a mile or two miles. It's going to impact 4.1 miles, go by 19 lots. And, you know, I really think that you need to be addressing a policy for Arrowstone, which is that we're going to grant a grandfathering of those roads. Certainly, any other conditions you have for subdivision would have to be met, but when it comes to roads, the roads are what they are. Improving 200 feet or 200 yards or a half a mile of one stretch of road, to me, is impractical. Okay? And there's no way we're going to be able to improve the roads for the entire subdivision. So I would just ask that if you're going to consider this variance, you consider it for the entire subdivision. I do agree that all of us, when we bought our lots, knew that splitting the lots was permissible as long as they were done within the covenants. Some people bought for that reason, some did not. Okay? Some people have, do believe it's a hardship that they can no longer split their lot because of the conditions that have been put on by the planning board and the county commissioners concerning the roads. Either way, as I say, if you're going to rule on this, I think you need to rule for the entire subdivision, not just one lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ready to go?
Just a minute.
Are there any other public comments, or does anybody want to say that they agree with John, or have another opinion?
No. It's okay. We know who you're talking about.
All right.
Close, if you would, Mr. Chairman, close the public comment and then ask for rebuttal on the public comment.
I have a question. Sir, you were going to bring forth some comments. Are you, can we hear those at this time?
I said I had a comment when the engineer was talking about widening the road, and it was just an observation about, that I don't quite agree with him about. Even though, and I, even though widening the whole road would be ideal, we can't do that, we don't have the authority to do that. But even if it's widened and a spot was particularly narrow, that is a good thing.
So in answer to your question, yeah. Good.
My comment is, is in one place along there, the road is very narrow. And he said, what difference does it make if we don't widen? Well, and he said, if it's 24-foot wide or 16-foot wide, there's no difference. There is if you're going down that road and a fire truck is coming up and you want to pass a fire truck on that section. You're going to need a wide road for that, 24 feet, but adequately fill that.
My name is Leslie Seward. I'm a lot owner. I know that one of the things that you're addressing us to the variance is to put speed limit signs. I don't particularly support that whatsoever. I don't know what speed limit you're anticipating will be posted, but I don't think that would be something that would be very aesthetic to the association or to the subdivision itself, unless it's at each gate entrance.
Okay? Thank you. Any other comment?
We actually do have, within our covenants, 25 mile-an-hour restriction. It is posted off the gate coming off of Scalcoho.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so we will go ahead and close the public part of the comments, and Gordon, and your associate can answer, or any rebuttals or any answers or comments.
Hell, I appreciate all your comments. I thought they were to the point, very good, very good. And as far as the signage, the main. And as far as the signage, the main thing on those curves, it would be under 70-foot radius, post a 15 mile per hour sign on those with an...